Announcement before we begin, if anybody's here to speak on Gun World, that's going to be taking up April 10th, Jeff at committee, and then April 17th at council. It's not on the agenda for tonight.
If anybody's here, though, that wanted to come in and talk about it, can they take a few minutes?
Absolutely, you can.
Okay. I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning, and Billing Committee of March 27th. Order, please. Would you take your role?
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Police.
Here.
Alderman Lewitin. Alderman Shaki.
Here.
Alderman Cadella.
Here.
Alderman Winger. Alderman Coles.
Yeah.
Alderman, can I?
First item is a report and recommend-- oh, I'm sorry. First item is approval of minutes of March 13th, 2008. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. First item is a report and recommendation that petitioner Elmhurst Builders requests a re-subdivision of the Arborwood subdivision. This re-subdivision would create one additional single-family residential lot within the subdivision. This lot would be located on an existing outlot, which was a set aside for detention facilities. The detention facility is no longer necessary for the development due to the improvements to the other detention facilities which benefit this development. Mr. Zimmer, would you like to?
We did the initial presentation, so I won't go forward and repeat anything unless anyone has any specific questions at this point. We were asked to consider some additional contributions to the city, and in discussing it matter further with Elmhurst Builders and developers, basically what we thought we would offer in lieu of some type of cash contribution is to possibly provide for completion of Pine Street, which is over right here. Our original subdivision plan and approval basically provided for only a partial street to be put in for Pine. And as it was-- and what we're proposing at this point is, instead of just putting a partial street in for Pine, which is all that we're required to do, is to go ahead and complete and put a full street in for Pine Street. That would include the full 66-foot right-of-way, it would include curbs, gutters. However, we would ask that we only put sidewalks just on the east side. Putting sidewalks on the west side, where this is all vacant and probably to be improved property later on and to be developed, doesn't make good sense, because obviously, construction would tend to ruin and damage the sidewalks, and it would just be more repairs and more problems. So what we're proposing is to finish Pine Street, do it as a full street, curbs, gutters, sidewalks just on the east side, which right now would make the most amount of sense, leave the sidewalks off on this side for future development and whoever develops that area. And we would also ask for a recapture agreement to be provided for the costs of putting Pine Street in. We feel that that would probably contribute more to the immediate development and immediate use of the property than waiting for it for some future point of having to deal with Potter Street and so on. We don't think that that's something that is advantageous to the immediate area as our contribution would be to complete a full street for Pine.
So you're-- let me see if I've got this straight. Are you finished? I'm sorry.
What we would be talking about, as I want to make it clear, is Pine Street, we would be talking about developing it only from Arbor to Potter, in this area right around the project here. There's a lot of vacant land and parcels over here yet to be developed. It doesn't make, again, good sense to develop this area, because, again, it's going to be tore up by future construction and so on. In this area, we've at least got half of the street developed, so we would be talking about developing Pine-- putting Pine Street in as a full street from Arbor all the way through to Potter. That would be a full 66-foot right-of-way, curbs, gutters, sidewalks to be provided only on the east side, however, not on the west side, where this is all just open land and it's not developed at this point.
You're now-- you're intending to put three houses on Pine?
That's-- well, right now, the project as approved provides for two houses. This is the extra lot that we are acquiring or seeking to be acquired as a result of the reduced detention area. So, yes, ultimately, if the-- if this re-subdivision is approved, there will be three lots on Pine Street. That's correct.
Could you sell those three lots if-- without curb and gutter and sidewalks in front of those three houses on Pine?
Well, we have-- there is a partial street that will be put in.
No, I'm not-- I know it's a partial street, but I'm saying now, you're building three new houses, and you don't-- you're putting in sidewalks and curbs in front of those three houses. I mean, isn't that a given?
Well--
That's not-- you're not doing anything for the city except selling your three houses there.
Well, it-- you're only putting in a 22-foot right-of-way and not a complete street there. So those lots are going to be just basically serviced under the present subdivision without a full street. There is no requirement to do so, and I don't know--
You're going to put sidewalks, right?
I don't believe-- Frank, were sidewalks planned for that area already? Sidewalks were-- will be-- would be put in in that area.
Okay. I mean, I don't think you're going to be selling houses without sidewalks in front of them.
Most likely--
What I'm getting at is what this is-- I think this is a necessity for the houses.
Well--
Now, what I'm wondering about is, you're developing this whole area, right?
Well, there are-- there are basically the two townhomes that are going in here.
Right. Two townhomes there. How many private homes?
Private homes over here, there is basically, right now, five lots under the present subdivision to be approved in this area, and then another townhome in this area.
And you're not doing anything over here?
Those are all single-family lots, which will be developed to single families.
So you're doing, actually, this whole area?
Right. And Arbor Street is actually being put in by the developer.
Now, along this street over here, you're putting in townhomes. Is there sidewalks in front of those townhomes?
No.
You're going to have nothing in front of these townhomes, or on this side of the street, no sidewalks, no nothing?
I don't believe at this point that sidewalks were planned, no.
Well, how can you build houses and not put sidewalks in front of the houses and townhouses?
Well, the townhomes--
You know, you're selling houses, but you're selling the lot, you're selling the whole property. What-- you're going to leave out the sidewalks?
Well, the townhomes basically--
Understand that.
They're not facing directly on Potter. Most of them, they'll be facing each other this way.
Well, that doesn't make any difference.
But it's not likely that sidewalks are going to be that necessary for the people in that area.
That doesn't make any difference. It's still the street. The street has still got to have-- you're going to have people living there with children, are you not? Where are they going to be walking? Or riding their-- their little kids riding their bikes on the street?
Well, at this point, that's basically the way it would be set up. That's the way it was approved.
Well, that's not-- I don't think that's logical. I think if you're going to be putting in all these houses, I would say that you need a sidewalk at least on one side of the street there. You need the sidewalk that you say you are putting in over here, hopefully, and you would need a sidewalk over here.
I believe--
And, I mean, our rules, our ordinances do say that people have to have a sidewalk on one side of the street, and you want to put in homes and not have sidewalks? And we're going to have to go back to those people and say, "You just bought a house, and I got to put in a sidewalk?"
Well, sidewalks--
Wouldn't it make more sense just to have it added on to the price of the house?
Sidewalks were provided on Arbor Lane, so those will be there for all of those.
Arbor Lane, they are.
Yes. I believe that's correct. And Pine Street, I don't believe sidewalks. Are you putting sidewalks in at that point?
On the west side of the street.
I'm pardon--
No.
On Pine Street. No Pine-- no sidewalks?
No sidewalks? You have to go to the mic if you're going to speak.
My name's Frank Judas with Elmhurst Builders and Developers. Okay. Lot 15 is a four-unit townhouse that faces west.
Okay.
Okay. There is a sidewalk in front of the four units that goes north and south. There is a sidewalk that goes to the parking lot.
Okay.
There are garages, rear garages, that are attached.
Okay.
So there is sidewalks in front of it. There's no sidewalks along Potter.
But you're putting in a condo here and a condo here, right?
I put in a condo here and a condo here, which will also have sidewalks in front of it here, and on the front here, going to the paved area in the back where the garages are.
But not in between? You mean, there's no sidewalks here?
These orange-- these orange units, I don't know. There is sidewalks in the units themselves to the parking lot.
So you're building all these houses, if I'm not mistaken, it's 13, including these, you're building one, two, three, four condos, and you can't put a sidewalk?
Where would I put it to?
Manchos?
Where would I put it to?
On the-- I mean, if somebody's walking down that street, they're going to be walking down the street, children walking down the street.
But am I going to start a sidewalk and then stop it?
Yeah. I-- no, you should-- that should be completed.
Well, this isn't my property. This isn't my property. This isn't my property, and this isn't my property.
So, the heck with it, because it's not your property. We'll just let people walk on mud. Is that what you're saying?
Well, if you own--
Or they have to get off the sidewalk, walk on the street over there, and get back on the sidewalk?
Well, I think what Mr. Judas has indicated is that he doesn't have legal authority to enter upon someone else's property to put a sidewalk. We don't-- we just don't have that authority to cross.
Could the city give them authority to put a sidewalk across there in between the two properties that they own? Well, that's what I'm talking about, a dedicated easement with a sidewalk.
Have you seen this area, sir?
Yeah, I've driven by there a number of times.
Okay.
And I don't understand why we are asking that-- we're putting in brand-new, nice houses, and we're going to be asking the people to walk on the street.
Could I show you some pictures that I took of the area?
I've seen them. I don't know why I need to look at pictures.
How close everything is to the street?
Well, you still have room for sidewalks, otherwise, you wouldn't be able to put in the houses. They're covered, right? I mean, it has to be--
Our sidewalks-- our sidewalks in front of our buildings are attached to our rear driveways, which is all driveway from here back.
Mr. Noah, please. I'm trying to understand--
Thank you, Chairman Shaki. I think part of what-- correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Judas, but I think part of the situation here is presently, there is a covert system along the north side of Potter Street. And I don't believe there-- until storm sirs are located there, I don't think it-- there would be an area where you'd be able to place a sidewalk relative to having to replace, dig it up and replace it once storm sirs were installed in that particular area.
Okay.
Because there's a big swale there now.
But how about on-- how about on this side of the street? How about on the south side of the street, on Potter?
There's no such condition like that on the south side.
So there is room for sidewalks?
Yeah, it is-- it is burned down, but without--
There's room for sidewalks?
I would think so. There's an easement there and everything else. There should be enough room for.
So you're building 13 houses and four condos, and you can't put in a sidewalk on Manchos, or on Potter?
What we want to put-- these three houses, the front is going to be out here on Arbor. So these particular three lots will actually be exiting onto Arbor Street. So the sidewalks will be in for those three lots. All we'd be doing is to be putting something in the backyard. It makes sense to put it for this. There'll be a sidewalk along here for this townhome that's constructed here. So majority of these things do have sidewalks in front. What we're proposing is by completing Pine Street, we would actually be able to put the sidewalks in on this side, so that these lots would basically have. So there's really not any point for this side to have sidewalks, because that's in a real--
Well, you know, if people are walking down Potter, I think there is a point, rather than having them have to walk down Pine and then go to Arbor, why can't they walk directly down Potter? I mean, you're just going to have a backyard ending, and people are going to either be walking on the street, or children, or they're going to be walking, if it's raining, in the mud.
Well--
I don't understand you. With 13 houses and four condos, you can't afford to put in a sidewalk on Manch-- on Potter? What would that cost? Would you tell me what it would cost?
Probably, for the sidewalks on one side?
Yeah.
Probably, I don't know, I'd say roughly $30,000, $40,000.
And you can't-- building all those houses and condos, you can't afford to put in $13,000 with-- with the sidewalks?
You know, it's not the idea of not affording it. It's the idea of what I gave up prior to this, Mr. Alderman.
You did. You gave up--
I gave up a lot.
Three detention ponds, but you got another lot for a house.
I didn't get it yet. See, what I should have--
We're going to give it to you tonight if you can put in a sidewalk. Let's put it that way.
So what you're saying is, if I put a sidewalk from Pine to Spruce?
Yeah.
South side, that's it.
And, of course, Arbor--
Oh, yeah, well, this I'm going to do anyway.
And Pine, yeah.
That's what I'm going to do anyway.
Yeah. I don't underst-- that's what you're saying, you can't do, or you can do?
No, I never said I couldn't do it. I never said that, sir.
Oh, oh, okay.
I didn't say that. You said that. Okay, fine.
See, I didn't see that in the plans.
If you will approve it, with this one lot, I will put in a sidewalk from Pine to Spruce.
Well, it's not going to benefit you or the city not to put in that lot. I mean, it's silly to have an outlot like that that's too small to have a park or anything else on it. So you may as well build a house on it and make the profit on the house, but at the same time, to do something a little bit for the city, as long as we're allowing you to build this whole section up, in which we're--
I think I've been more than fair, but I am willing to put the sidewalk in.
You will?
I will put the sidewalk in on the south side.
Do we have any questions? I'm sorry. I didn't mean to take up the whole area.
Couple of questions. Let me freshen my mind up here. Your detention is now going into Oregon Gate Detention Basin. Am I right?
One acre foot of it is.
One acre foot of it.
One acre foot of it, that's correct. That I purchased from Lennar.
All right, so there is a written agreement on that?
Well, there was a recapture agreement that--
Okay.
The city has.
Well, I'm just saying, we didn't get it in our packet. That's why I'm--
Oh, yeah. No, they had it a long time ago, before I got a permit.
I just want to make sure, because that was-- when it was presented to us at first, the detention basin was supposed to be on here, and I agree. But I just want to make sure that, as Alderman, we don't have the whole--
Okay. But there was a recapture agreement for the one acre foot--
Okay.
And for the lift station.
Okay.
Which I did give to the--
Okay.
Had a committee--
We do have that.
Right.
Okay. Well, I'm just saying--
Don't get me wrong. What you're doing is nice. It's great. I mean, it's going to take an area, scrub trees, and make it into a nice, beautiful area, I hope, with houses that are nice and everything else, but I just don't want to cause another problem without the sidewalks.
I'm not here to cause problems.
And as long as you're willing to put those in--
No.
I'll make the motion. Is there any more comments or any other questions?
I guess I was done with my comments.
Mr. Mayor. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you-- if you weren't? No, if you weren't, though. Mr. Mayor.
I just want to remind everybody before we go too far that this is a pre-existing approved subdivision, and the terms and the conditions were approved by the city council, I think it was about two years ago.
Yes.
The issue before you tonight is to add one additional lot.
Right. And what I'm saying is that, to add one additional lot, I'm asking the gentleman if he would put in the sidewalk on Potter. Did you have any other questions, Mr. Wesley? Anybody else? I'll make a motion, then, if I may, that we approve the new re-subdivision of the Arborwood subdivision to create an additional single-family residential lot within the subdivision. And the lot would be located on an outlot, which was set aside for detention, but the detention is no longer necessary due to the one large detention pond you have on the northeast part of the--
Correct.
Right. Okay. And that you would also include the sidewalk on the south side of Potter. Right. Do I have a second? All in-- any questions? All in favor?
Aye. Abstain.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chairman. Appreciate it. And appreciate what you're doing for Wooddale. I received a note saying that we cannot hear comments on the Gun World project tonight. That'll be coming up. What dates then, Mr. Mayor, so people will know?
April 10th for committee and April 17th for city council.
And when would the people be advised to be here to talk, to express their opinions about it?
April 10th, presuming you allow their comments at committee, and then April 17th at city council, all citizens can address the city council.
Okay. Is there anybody here that won't be able to make the April 10th meeting that would like to say something about the Gun World? Nope. Okay. Thank you.
That'll be on a Thursday?
Thursday.
Second Thursday of the month?
At 7:00 PM.
Thank you. Next item is a report and recommendation on the tree preservation ordinance. Alderman Cadella.
Can I make a motion to table that discussion?
I'll second the motion. Would you take the role, please? Can I ask you one question? Why so-- okay. No, you can't speak on a motion to table. Talk afterwards to whoever you'd like. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One opposed. Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation and a discussion to amend the sign code ordinance relating to non-conforming signs within the proposed grade separation area. May I ask who had this put on?
I did.
Alderman Wesley?
Yes.
You want to talk about it, please?
Reason why we brought this to council's attention. It's unfortunate that something happened that I did not know that could happen with the new sign ordinance. A developer came in here, and Sweet Baby Ray's came in, and I thought it was perfectly clear that there would be no more pole signs installed, or any type of sign like that being installed along Irving Park Road in that area. Obviously, there was a ordinance saying that he can put it up due to the fact he was in a grade separation area, but according to the way I understand, when he came to us, that we did talk to him about making the sign come down to the ground, obviously, something happened there, and it didn't happen. That sign is back up as high as you can. Yes, he did use existing poles, but I think we need to revisit this ordinance and strike something out of this ordinance for this does not happen again, because-- and I'll tell you, I just got to-- I went in the building department, and I says, "Who authorized that sign?" Because he says he went by the code, and it is in there saying that he is eligible because he was part of the grade separation. But I thought that our conversation with Sweet Baby Ray's, that was going to be down to the ground, obviously, it didn't happen. His sign thing was in. We need to change that ordinance tonight and make sure it doesn't happen again, because we are trying to get those signs lowered. If you go down that street right now, the only one, well, that looks really nice right now, is 711 went down to the ground like our code was. This was something that slipped through us with this ordinance, and I think we should revisit it and strike that part of the ordinance. I believe Roger knows type of the area of the ordinance. So I will be making a motion on the floor to strike out the ordinance, remove section
I'll second that.
Mr. Noah, would you like to comment on how this happened?
Yes. Thank you, Chairman Shaki. Alderman Wesley is absolutely correct, and I think part of it were some fundamental problems that occurred with outknowledge of certain individuals, but also, too, when the motion was made the evening approving the development, that was approving the subdivi-- the subdivision, as well as the other, its relationship to the expanding business. The portion that Alderman Wesley had talked about was something that Alderman Winger had mentioned specifically, but unfortunately, it was not part of the motion. So even though the developer came in prior to, actually came in the end of last year to apply for his sign permit, not too many people knew that he was applying for that sign permit. It wound up going through the process, getting approved, but then again, too, like I said, the removal of the sign with a replacement of a monument sign was not part of the motion, so we were bitten twice there. But we can proceed at council's request to comply and have that changed in accordance with the city attorney's--
And what's the time limit now before they have to take it down if we approve this?
I believe it's less than three years right now, as we stand.
So we got to let it be up there for three years, because we forgot? Somebody didn't mention it to us. Any other comments?
I'd like to ask, is any street affected besides Irving Park Road by this ordinance?
That'll just affect that intersection area where the Irving Park Road realignment would have impacted these individuals.
Does it affect only Irving Park Road?
Sorry.
Yes, sorry. Is Wooddale Road, yes?
Yes. So the signs that are on Wooddale Road have to come down too sometime under this ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, they would all have to comply to the new sign code, which would require the monument signs be erected.
How far north on Wooddale Road does that affect?
All the way.
I believe it goes all the way to Stoneham.
Are you-- any more comments? Mr. Alderman Lewit?
Well, that would mean that we're talking about the signs on my building, where I rent, would have to come down?
They don't come down. They come-- they're no longer way up in the air. They come down to street level.
What is--
And they would all be an even level.
You've got--
I think we, before we go further on this, there are other laws that may affect you, and you probably should not be involved in this discussion.
Well, I'll reclude if I--
Because you have a direct interest in the discussion we're now contemplating.
I will--
May I want to defer this until the city attorney can be present?
All right. There's a motion on the floor and second, Mayor.
I understand that, but I think he has the right to be advised as to what his rights are and what he can and cannot say.
And this is a present ordinance in effect now?
But, Mr--
You threw your time, but it was-- you did pass--
Let's table this till we have an attorney present, then.
No.
Now, we're talking just about this portion here, and we will be finalizing the vote next week when the attorney's here.
Unfortunately, the issue before you, Mr. Chairman, is can Alderman Lewitin speak to the issue or not? My recommendation is that you should have a consultation with the city attorney before he comments further.
Okay.
Then we have to table it?
No.
Mayor?
Well, the council doesn't have to do anything. However, I think you have the right to have the advice of the city attorney before we go further on this discussion, and I would ask the city council to extend that consideration to Alderman Lewitin. There is another issue, which you have kind of glossed over, which also affects this. Officially, the policy of the city council is still 2A. That has never changed. That is still on the books, and that is still a policy of the city council. So you really need to address that underlying issue as well. Otherwise, you're going to be modifying this code, and officially, we're still have endorsed 2A. We've had numerous discussions that we're no longer going in that direction, and that we're considering congestion mitigation and other projects, but there's never been a motion before the city council to change that 2A is the preferred alternative.
Mr. Manager?
Yeah, I don't know if-- I don't want to say the mayor's wrong, but I don't think there was an official 2A endorsement. There was an official 2A endorsement at a committee level, but not at an official council level, so we're still considering all options.
I think that actually may predate even your employment with the city of Wooddale.
But why would we--
I believe, and Alderman Coles was chairman or vice-chairman of the committee, so he can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at one point, the committee-- can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe at one point, the committee reported to the city council, and the city council did adopt 2A as the preferred alternative.
Committee adopted 2A as the, we eliminated two, oh, we eliminated two, we eliminated one, and we went with 2A. We eliminated three, I believe, because that was too further up, and we, out of the committee, we brought that to the council, and the council agreed to look at 2A only. But we tried to get, I don't even remember the alphabet, to eliminate, looking at the other ones, and they said they couldn't do that because the state and the laws said they have to look at all three of them, but they kept printing all three of them up even though we only wanted 2A. And I believe we went, and the council agreed to 2A.
I think, I think 2A thing is, is not what we're talking about here. We can bring, we can certainly bring it up in the future, but I don't think, what we're discussing right now is we have an ordinance saying that you cannot put up pole signs, and we, all we want to do is stop any new pole signs from going up like went up at Sweet Baby Ray's. Yeah, Alderman Coles?
We agreed that the signs can't be no more than 10 feet high. I believe Mike's, we agreed that Mike's bowling alley was one of the first signs that we looked at, and then we decided to get the two for the Kiwanis, or the Lions and City Hall, a type of signs there. The new dentist that was, put up the building on Irving Park, he put up a 10-foot one. 711, I see they got a small sign. Further down, there's another dentist that went in, he's got a, a small sign. The bank even went with a smaller sign. The pole signs can be fixed, all they have to do is cut, cut the section out and burn the whole thing down, that's all they got to do. I mean, actually, because that's all Sweet Ray's got to do, is just cut the sign, the pole section of the pole out and burn it down. We made that ordinance a long time ago about when we decided to buy the signs for the city, and that's what we should stick with. Now, I don't remember this ordinance being in here, but I guess it snuck in, which happens once in a while when we're talking.
The whole idea tonight is to, is not to allow any additional signs.
Why don't we, why don't we just make a motion to say, take 13907A1?